All right, it is seven P M and I would like to call this meeting to order. While this meeting is being held in person, you're offering the option to call instructions on how participate virtually are included in the city council calendar items. Let's sit on the front page of Mission KS dot org. Please stand and join me for the public hearing. I plan to continue the live from the Seattle State Department. And the shooter probably is a witch's stance. Thomas, please call the roll.
Thomas, here. Boating House, Loudon. Riard.
Here.
King.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Carpenter Davis.
Josie.
Here.
All right, we have one public hearing this evening. First, we will hear from City Administrator Laura Smith. Following her presentation, if any members of the public would like to make a comment on the items listed for public hearing with regards to Mission and Beverly LLC, Millhouse Tax Abatement Request, that would be the time. So we'll start with Laura.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mary. And I have. There is a copy of the PowerPoint presentation at your place this evening. It looks very similar to one that you saw at the committee meeting with a few changes. This is actually one that the mayor and I took when we made a presentation to the Park Recreation and Tree Commission. Uh, so I'm here this evening, um, to just sort of provide some information. Uh, we have officially called the public hearing for consideration of, uh, the Millhouse, uh, Mission and Beverly LLC Tax Abatement Project, multifamily project located, um, generally at Beverly and Martway here in Mission. Um, just kind of a quick recap of the timeline and the project's history. We need Millhouse approach the city with the concept in the summer of twenty twenty-two. Uh, as we talked about at the committee meeting, uh, through conversations with the mayor and staff, uh, we looked at and developed or, um, actually assembled the parcel south of Martway and expanded those, uh, which allowed for, uh, some, some positive changes in just the actual design or anticipated design of those buildings. Uh, then we went into a period, as you all are aware, that we put that project and the DA of the Mall project on hold while the council, uh, had the opportunity to review and update the city's tax abatement policy. We came back in October, considered, um, the fifty of the mall approved fifty of the mall project and then also, uh, re-engaged, uh, with Millhouse in anticipation of bringing them forward in this first quarter of twenty twenty-four. So in January, we discussed the revised project with you all. Uh, we did some additional work based on comments and feedback with the developer. We came back with a recommendation, uh, to the, um, February committee meeting, and then we're here for the public hearing, uh, this evening. You have a resolution of intent that will clearly honor our agenda. This next slide is one that Mr. Kimmel covered during the committee meeting. And really, I think you'll recall that, uh, the first day of the meeting, the evaluation of the tax abatement request is for the developer to look with our independent financial advisor to review the pro forma and test whether or not there is a need from, um, but for the use of an incentive, uh, could we reasonably expect a developer to, um, take on a project, um, of this size and scope? Once that's established, then we really, uh, began to, to sort of dive in and look at other aspects of the project and how that might align with the criteria and the city's tax abatement policy. One of those things that we look at is the impact of, uh, current taxes being generated by the property, taxes being generated, uh, with, uh, a recommended abatement, which in this case is, uh, seventy-five percent, and then estimated mission taxes after the expiration of the abatement in ten years. So you'll recall that, um, there were a pretty significant jump. The properties are currently assessed at only about six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, generating annually permission about eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars in, uh, property taxes. Um, after the development, even with the re-classification at a lower appraisal rate at eleven and a half percent versus a twenty-five percent rental rate, um, with the increased, uh, assessed valuation, um, the property taxes that go to almost ninety-two thousand dollars and twenty-five percent of that is twenty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So in a, in effect, even with the abatement for the first ten years, we're doubling the revenues being generated by this property. And then we also continue to collect our stormwater utility fee. Um, total estimated tax revenues to us over the first ten years are about two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And then in year eleven, our estimated retained taxes jumped to about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And so we didn't include it here, but, um, just based on this analysis, that same sort of increase in estimated tax annual tax revenues could be, uh, transferred or extrapolated to any of the other taxing jurisdictions impacting fire district, library, accounting, et cetera. To next slide, please. So the factors that we consider in recommending a tax abatement, and particularly as it relates to this project, Millhouse is a local and established developer. They have had other successful projects here in Kansas City metropolitan area on both sides of the state line. With this project, they're looking to invest seventy-five plus million dollars in capital investment with proximity to our downtown and other amenities such as the community center. Um, their analysis with the pro forma and Mr. Kimmel's review did demonstrate a gap in market return if no incentive were to be provided. Uh, we talked about the committee, um, Millan- Millhouse's willingness and ability to assemble multiple parcels which are currently vacant or voided. Uh, and those are the ones that are highlighted, uh, here on this slide. Mission tax revenue double over our existing, even during the ten-year abatement period. It allows for the development on the south side of Martway to be more sensitive to the neighborhood concerns that we've heard, uh, through previous iterations by lowering height to a three-story building. Um, blood plane limitations on that, on the southern parcels, however, did require the building to be linear as opposed to more of an L-shaped, which Millhouse was initially contemplating. And that, uh, in, in preliminary review with community development, we would not have been able to issue the building permit for that L-shaped building, uh, which is the, um, driver for the land swap of green space on the south side of Martway in exchange for Beverly Park sort of transitioning away. As we talked through that with the developer, they were willing to increase their cash contribution from three hundred thousand to five hundred thousand dollars to allow for the potential, potential expansion and enhancement of parking green space elsewhere. And they've had, they do their commitment to the sustainable building certification process and then other sustainability, um, factors which, uh, Ms. Coffee, uh, covered at the committee meeting as well. So next slide, please. So based on those criteria and application of tax abatement policy, uh, staff recommended at the February committee meeting, the, uh, tax abatement percentage, uh, in total of seventy-five percent distributed among the categories shown here on the slide. Baseline of forty-five percent because it means the right policy criteria. Capital investment is based on the amount of, uh, of investments, um, which at seventy-five plus thousand, million dollars, uh, qualified them for fifteen percent adjustment, party area adjustment of ten percent. Uh, attainable housing, they will not be incorporating attainable housing into the project. Um, they were very clear from the, from the outset, that was something, uh, and that was in initially what the three hundred thousand dollar cash contribution was intended to sort of offset. Uh, the environmental design adjustment at two and a half percent and then the community benefit adjustment, uh, two and a half percent, which is reflective of the increase in the upward cash contribution. So next slide, this again is just a better visual, I think, of why that land swap didn't work. You can see that the need to extend this building and make it more linear, uh, doesn't allow for, uh, comparable-sized green space acreage to be allocated on the south side of Martway. So we talked, uh, at length in, at the committee meeting in February about how we can add or enhance green space as a part of this project. Um, and we presented an option where we could designate, uh, current city-owned parcels adjacent to the Rock Creek Trail as parks, uh, totaling, uh, a little more than one point three five acres. We don't have a council resolution which would then make disposal of those parcels in the future subject to certain statutory notice of petition requirements. And it allows for the designated parkland to more than triple in, uh, area when compared to the existing Beverly Park, which is about four point three acres. With the cash contribution, there's an opportunity then, as the recommendations move forward out of the Rock Creek corridor study to begin, uh, jump-starting sort of implementation and re-reading the box phase. So, uh, next slide, please. Um, I think I'm set back. Shank. Um, it also, so it's been important to the council through this, this project and others to be able to add or enhance green space. As I mentioned, we can potentially jumpstart Rock Creek, Rock Creek corridor study improvements, which will be coming forward to you all next month. And a work session will really begin, you saw kind of a preview of those, uh, we've been through the public meeting process. It maintains green space and nothing the same proximity to surrounding residents as Beverly Park just sort of flips it, uh, to further, one lot further to the east, and it really maximizes investment in the core of Mission with both the project investment and the ability to add and enhance the green space. And as I mentioned, uh, the mayor and I made, uh, the presentation to the Park Federation and Tree Commission at their February twelfth meeting. Uh, and they were, I think it's safe to say, excited about the opportunity, uh, the same degree, I think, as the council was and looking forward to having an opportunity to move those forward. So we were pleased to be able to do that. Uh, so again, we're here this evening, um, we'll have an opportunity to answer any remaining questions. Uh, and then later on your agenda, as I mentioned, there is a resolution of intent, um, that would signal, uh, the council's commitment to, uh, granting the, both the property tax abatement and the sales tax exemption through the IRB process for this project. And it's, um, so times our public hearing, um, I think we did talk at the February committee meeting that in order to dispose of Beverly Park, uh, we do have to follow certain statutory requirements. Um, we have published for two consecutive weeks in the legal record and the notice of our intent to dispose of that. Uh, the second publication ran yesterday, and so the thirty-day period within which a petition could be, uh, filed in opposition to the disposal of that parkland officially starts today and runs for the next thirty days. We would anticipate, um, that Millhouse would plan to, uh, their tentative, where they are scheduled for the April, uh, planning commission meeting for review of their preliminary development plan. Uh, and then they would move through the next several months through preliminary and final development plan phases, close on the properties. Anticipated construction start in April of twenty twenty-five, that would be the same time at which the cash contribution would be made to the city with construction completion in August of twenty twenty-seven. And so that's all I have for my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions now, or I can certainly answer them when we get to consideration of the resolution of intent.
Do you want to take a public comment before?
Yes, I think they want a public comment.
Yep. So we'll turn a public comment. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud or note that you would like to speak. We will call on you shortly to make your comments verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are a part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand, but stay seated and we'll call on you to come, come to the left turn to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Do we have any members of the public who'd like to speak? Yes, John, come on up.
All right, good evening, John Arnett, Mission. I want to stand in support of the, uh, the Millhouse, uh, abatement policy before you now. Uh, I was able to watch the February seventh, uh, presentation, which was very, very helpful, uh, to me as a resident and, uh, knowing some of the background, but, uh, there was a lot of thoughtful and, uh, well, uh, well-considered, uh, comments made by the council, which, uh, really helped me as a, as a resident. Uh, compliments to the staff, uh, for working with Millhouse over the years to come to some, uh, resolution or come, come to some, uh, conclusion of, of the, of the properties that, that can certainly benefit from, uh, from improvement. Uh, it's a apartment, uh, apartment dwelling, uh, which, uh, of course does not bring homeowner residents into the city, but it still, it still brings residents, uh, who can engage with the city, take part in, uh, activities, uh, visit, uh, businesses, just for overall, uh, can be an overall benefit to the city as, as residents. Also, uh, compliments to the, to staff for finding a replacement, uh, for the, for the green space for Beverly Park. I think that was, uh, really, really important and, uh, thoughtful idea that, uh, I would not have thought of, uh, maybe not knowing what all the city property is, but it's sure a, it's a, uh, sure a good resolution to that. So I think overall, and, and I could tell from the, the comments from the council that, uh, everyone, uh, most, well, in general, there's a favor, uh, for the, uh, abatement. And, uh, I agree that it's not a, a burden to, uh, to a resident. I, I, overall, it's not a burden to, as, as a resident. And the, the overall income, uh, is increased over the first ten years. And even after that, there's going to be a real benefit for, uh, income opportunities for the city. So I do, uh, stand in and support and, uh, compliments to all, uh, for a good, uh, resolution to bring a, uh, a good project to the city. Thank you.
Do we have any online comments?
Yes, Mayor, we do have one online comment.
Okay.
Uh, this comment is from Nicole Sullivan, uh, PRT Commission Chair. She states, I support this project. I am excited about the city's commitment to designate new green and park space in place of, of Beverly Park. While I was hesitant at first, it seems like the right move now. I expect the cash contribution to help jumpstart improvements to our trail system and parks. I would love to see a council resolution as soon as possible, does that designate the green space along the Rock Creek corridor?
Any further in-person comments? Seeing none from the public, any council comments or questions at this time? Seeing none, I will now formally close the hearing on the Mission and Beverly LLC Millhouse Tax Abatement Request. The council will consider the related action items as item seven A and seven B later on our agenda. We do have two special presentations this evening. An introduction by Brian Scott of Two New Community Development Employees is our first item. Brian, will you please share your staff updates?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm proud to say we have a full house again. We will. I hired two new employees last week. Um, Kalen Berg is our new building official. He replaces Jim Brown, who left us back in October. And Kalen is from Vermillion, South Dakota, where he has served as a building official for the past few years. But he's a Kansas native, so he's happy to be back home. And, um, he and his wife are making a nice adjustment back to the Kansas City area. His wife is a nurse, correct?
Physician assistant.
Physician assistant for practicing Lawrence. And they're looking for a place to live. We're in the apartment right now, looking for a place to settle down the roots. Uh, we are very excited to have him here, he's to the ground running and gone through all our files, got everything up, running and organized and, and been out of all the projects already too, so glad to have him here with us. Our other new employee is David Binkley. And David comes to us from Block and Company. He served for a few years as a property manager, but prior to that, he had a career in code enforcement. Twenty-five plus years as a code enforcement officer for the city of Leewood and the city of Latham. And I've been told that the city of Latham is kind of a far standard of code enforcement. So, um, he comes to us with a wealth of knowledge and experience. And I think he's just got a great attitude about code enforcement, you know, kind of proactive, reactive. Um, it is kind of a even temperament and dealing with situations and being able to succeed with collision. So very excited to have both these gentlemen here and be able to pick their brains and make our apartment or city better. Thank you very much, and please join us in welcoming.
Great. If you want to say anything, you can.
No, first week and a half has been very exciting. Yeah, can't expect too much, but very welcoming and, uh, very supportive, so.
Great.
It's been great.
I love it.
Thank you.
And our second, uh, presentation tonight is the Championship Tree Agenda.
Good evening, Mayor Council. It's important for you today to announce the twenty twenty-three Championship Tree Award, uh, recipient. Before I do that, uh, and invite him before us, I want to review the Championship Tree Program. It's hosted annually through the Mission Parks and Recreation Department, and it helps us qualify as a tree city USA, uh, designated each and every year. So we accept nominations from, uh, Mission residents. And then we present those nominations in the November and December, uh, Parks, Recreation and Tree Commission meetings for the PRT waiting on and ultimately decide the annual winner. So, um, at this point, I would like to invite Mr. Barry Oppenheimer up to the left turn as I review some of the qualifications for which it's to be, uh, named. But, um, Mr. Oppenheimer's tree was nominated because of its majestic presence within the neighborhood, its tree can coverage, tree location, and the amount of shade and the fact that it beautifies the neighborhood and has quite a unique origin story. Um, it is a red maple, and I don't know if Mr. Oppenheimer wants to share that, uh, story with you later on, but on behalf of the city of Mission, the Parks and Recreation Department and the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission, we present Mr. Barry Oppenheimer with his championship tree plaque for the year twenty twenty-three. Then, well, we also present to you a fifty-dollar gift card to Lowe's so that you can continue to invest in that tree can. And then obviously, the accolades that will shower upon you throughout the coming months. So, well, on behalf of City of Mission, we congratulate you.
All right, will you tell us the story of the tree?
Oh, the story of the tree is when I moved in in two thousand, the person I purchased the house very proud, he had stolen the tree from what was then Home Something Bank on Road. Since I didn't know anything about the tree, I trembled every once in a while, I knew nothing about this. And, uh, my son was born in the house and rolled into trees leaves every fall for about ten years. And it made for great pictures. And I just want to thank you all for, for the work you do. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next would be notes and bonds, but we do not have the items related to the issuance of notes and bonds this evening. So we'll move into our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has nine items tonight. Our council committees met on February seventh and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agree that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve. Mayor and the city council, without a consent agenda, it's written, I just won't enable the, the, the. Second, we have a motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Loudon.
Hi.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Josie.
Hi.
Boating House.
Hi.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carpenter Davis.
Hi.
King.
Hi.
Riard.
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, next we have public comments. This is if many members of the public would like to make a comment on items not included on our agenda tonight, that would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, again, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hands and stay seated and we will call on you to come to the left turn to make your comments. When you make your comments, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that has been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Do we have any public comment on items not on our agenda? Seeing none, we will turn to items from our planning mission. We do not have any items coming forward from the planning mission this evening, but we will move into our committee reports. Councilmember Thomas, will you please provide a report from the Finance and Administration Committee?
Sure. Finance and Administration Committee met on February seventh and considered eight items. The meeting minutes, resolution for city's sponsored festivals and events, special events permit for shiny Mission North Platte nineteen seventy-four. Think they have terminate fifth amended gateway to project plan, terminate gateway, community improvement district CID, resolution updating base, bank signatories and MIP authorization were approved under the consent agenda. A resolution establishing parks and park facilities and a resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds, Mission and Beverly LLC, both related to the Millhouse Tax Abatement Request, will be considered under the regulations. Seven A, resolution establishing, establishing park and park facility. Section two thirty, article two of City of Mission Municipal Code outlines the rules and regulations for Mission Parks and Park Facility. These regulations include things such as hours of operation, noise reductions, vehicle restrictions and signage. In addition to clearly defining where park rules, regulations or restrictions apply, the designation of park names solidifies the city's intention for the property to be preserved and maintain its recreational ordering space. This designation then means that in order to dispose or convert of the space to anything else, subjects that decision to a public notice and petition process in accordance with KSA twelve thirteen oh one. As the conversations with Millhouse regarding their mission of Beverly multifamily development have evolved, the request included incorporating the existing Beverly Park in front of the project in order to achieve multiple goals and objectives of both the developer and the city. The negotiations with the developer anticipate selling the Beverly Park parcel for five hundred thousand dollars. These funds would, would then be used to acquire new green space or to begin and through the existing green space defense of Rock Creek Trail. That's been a focus of the Rock Creek corridor study. The existing Beverly Park parcel is approximately point four three acres in size. There are eight parcels adjacent to the trail between Woodston and Outlook, which total one point eight two acres. Some of this acreage includes the Rock Creek Channel, but the designation of the particles as parks or park facilities would provide approximately one point three five acres of green or recreational. At the February seventh, two thousand twenty-four, I hit an administration committee meeting. The council directed staff to proceed with the, with initiating the statutory notice process for the potential sale of Beverly Park and should prepare the attached resolution which would designate these parcels as parks and park facilities. Beverly Park will remain on the list of designated facilities until such time at the property of the change of ownership. The resolution tonight outlines specific parks and park facilities to be covered by section two thirty, article two, as follows. Anderson Park, Mohawk Park, Broadmore Park, Mission Family Aquatic Center, Beverly Park, Pearl Harbor Park, Birch Park, Streetway Park, Johnson Drive Park, the market site, Pal Community Center, Legacy Park, Rock Creek Trail, Waterworks Park and Rock Creek Corner Park, to include the following parcels. Fifty-nine fifteen Woodston, fifty-nine oh eight Outlook, fifty-nine sixteen Outlook, fifty-nine twenty-two Outlook, fifty-nine twenty-four Outlook, fifty-nine oh seven Outlook, KP two seven five zero 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 zero, zero one six two and KP two seven five zero 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 one six three. Mayor, I move this speaker's house to approve the resolution designating car and park facilities in the city of Mission.
Seven.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this item?
I would just point out that this accomplishes what, uh, Ms. Sullivan requested that the council do as soon as possible. Uh, so I hope that aligns with the PRT's objectives.
Any other comments? Good job, Bones Zero, Hillary. All right, seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Carpenter Davis.
Hi.
Riard.
Hi.
Loudon.
Yes.
Josie.
Hi.
Boating House.
Hi.
Thomas.
Yes.
King.
Hi.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Next up, we have seven B, which is a resolution of intent to issue an industrial revenue bond, Mission and Beverly LLC. Millhouse has formally applied for consideration of both sales and property tax payment in connection with the Mission and Beverly LLC proposed two hundred and sixty-one unit multifamily project structured in service parking, located generally at fifty-nine thirty by Beverly Park. Under Kansas law, various economic development incentives are available to assist cities in achieving their economic development goals. Oh, in the Economic Development Revenue Bonds Act nineteen sixty-one, the act codified as amended KSA twelve seventeen forty at SE. The Kansas Legislature created industrial revenue bonds, IRBs, as an economic development tool for cities to stimulate economic prosperity and to promote economic stability by providing greater employment opportunities and diversification of industry. Cities may consider and issue IRBs when a proposed project further the economic goals and objectives of the city. The statutes provide for the use of IRBs to grant a property tax exemption and/or to grant a bill tax exemption on the purchase of materials and taxable labor. Following discussion at a January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four work session, a final staff recommendation was presented to the Finance and Administration Commission Committee. On February seventh, two thousand twenty-four, advising for a public hearing for February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. On February 7th, 2024, advising for a public hearing for February 21st, 2024, for council to take comment and consider granting a 75% property tax amendment. A detailed memorandum, cost analysis report and other materials outlining the potential financial benefits of the project to the city and other taxing jurisdictions, which was presented at the committee meeting are included in the council meeting event that's happened. During the meeting, council member Thomas inquired about what made up the indirect costs, outlining the cost benefit analysis report, Ms. Smith reached out to the individual preparing the report and that information was provided in the updated memo submitted in the back. Notice of public hearing is published in the legal record on February 13th and the required public hearing on the IRV application was conducted at the outset of our meeting this evening. Now the governing body will consider a resolution of intent authorizing the issuance of bonds and execution of performance agreement, which governs the responsibilities and commitments of both the city and the developer. Upon adoption of the resolution, the city will request a sales tax exemption certificate for the project from the Department of Revenue. The remaining cathedral steps detailed in the February 7th, 2024 memorandum will occur following construction of the project and satisfy the requirements outlined in the IRV statutes. Ms. Smith, I understand you have a minor amendment to the performance agreement to the staff of the council. Could you please provide that update to the council?
Yes, thank you. Um, I think councilmember Thomas covered it all extensively, but we did share the performance agreement, uh, which mirrors in generally always, uh, the one was for the 58th and Noll project. Uh, we did have a conversation, um, with the developer just this morning. Uh, and we wanted to highlight at your place is a copy of that performance agreement. If you go to page 10. At that, you will see, uh, red line section, uh, the end of section 5.2, which begins on the preceding page and I'll wait till everybody's there. Um, essentially what this, um, well, let me provide a little greater context perhaps. So the challenge that we have in any performance agreement or development agreement is creating guardrails and parameters to protect the city's interests, to mitigate risk for us. Um, and to hold the developer accountable for certain milestones and achieving certain things. But also providing enough incentive and, and ability for them to move forward and actually build a project. Because when we go through this process, that's ultimately what we all want to see. Um, we had reviewed the performance agreement with the developer and their team and then really just since our conversations with them at the end of last week. Uh, some continued, I think, conversations as they were speaking with their lender and really looking at moving this project forward, uh, the language at, at the end of this section caused, uh, some pause because it, it basically gave the council the ability to take away the entire remittance. If the sustainability criteria were not met. Um, and that I think is obvious as to why that might be a, the challenge for someone looking to lend, uh, on the project to commit. Obviously, the sustainability criteria are important for the council. And, uh, Mill House recognizes that. Um, and so we had a conversation with Mr. Wimby of Gilmore and Bell, Devin Coffey, uh, at Mill House who's here this evening and their attorney, uh, and came up with a language proposed here, which again, um, basically subject to all of the other things, um, give some flexibility that is, as long as they are pursuing or prove to the reasonable satisfaction of the city that they exercise their best efforts to comply with the environmental design credit set forth in section three. Still gives them the right to terminate the agreement. I, I think ultimately what we talked about is that's a flexibility where you might pull back a smaller percentage if they didn't meet that. That is still certainly their objective. Um, but we're at a different stage of the process. And so one of the questions that, uh, Mr. Wimby posed to them today, and I thought was an important one was, why is this different than when we looked at a Mill House performance agreement? So you may recall that in the 58th and Noll project, they originally intended to build that with no incentives. So they were already through, you know, processes, uh, and had gone through a much more in-depth assessment of the building and where it will qualify for certain criteria under the Green Gloves program. So they were at a different stage in the development process of the project. Mill House is working toward that, but we know they are just really kind of on the front end of that planning and development process. So, um, we again drafted this language this afternoon. I shared it, uh, prior to tonight's meeting, uh, with the mayor. We think it's still again provides the, meets the goals and objectives of the council, but doesn't sort of hamstring the developer uh, from a financing and a lending perspective and actually being able to advance it. So I didn't try to answer our questions. I know Mr. Wimby is here to answer questions. Uh, but I would defer those to once we have a motion on the floor to consider the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mayor, I move the city council approve the resolution of intent determining and declaring the intent of the City of Mission Kansas issue industrial revenue bonds in the amount not including 77 million commensaries lying to the town and 200,000 dollars depending on the class of acquiring, constructing, improving, equipping a commercial multifamily facility for the benefit of Mission and Beverly LLC and its successors in science.
Second.
We have a motion and second, any discussion or questions for? Seeing none, do we have any members of the public who wanted to comment on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Ryard.
Aye.
Louden.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Chosey.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yeah.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Kring.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That concludes my report. All right, thank you. Councilmember Louden, will you please provide a report from the community development committee? The community development committee also met on February 7th and considered seven items. Seeing minute, two perpless agreement letter of understanding and safe streets for all obligation of federal, uh, of, of branch funds were approved under the consent agenda. Mohawk Playground Phase Two, Solar Pigment Table at Waterworks Park, Johnson Two, uh, Johnson Drive Two, design contract from Metcalf to Lamar and a bike share program vacation of grant fund will be considered under the regular edge of the season. Seven C, Mohawk Playground Phase Two. During the conceptual design process, the stateholder groups and the larger public were educated on missions communities for all ages whole. An important consideration in all future park improvements was making inclusive playgrounds a priority. The existing design of the Mohawk Park Playground does not meet the high standards of tall facilities for inclusive design. Inclusive play areas have far reaching benefits, not just for the users, but also for the caregivers. They are also a welcome resource for parents with disabilities or aging caregivers who may want to interact with their children on the amenities. As the final design of phase two improvement involved cost estimates for inclusive playgrounds begin at $600,000 for the play features alone. Not including the board in place classic rubber surfacing and shade systems. This exceeded initial budget projections and estimates by approximately $200,000 and initiated staff to pursue discussion with about directed with staff to potential fundraising or brand funding, funding opportunities. Staff discussed the associated costs with county recreation representatives along with the need to generate additional funding and was educated about a unique brand program. That time, game time runs each fall. City council saw the value in saving $216,744 by ordering some of the playground features in October 2023 and storing it at Mission Public Works prior to installation. This allowed the playground installation to receive this plan. Staff is now ready to order the remaining play features along with the board in place rubber remains shade sales and corresponding installation costs. This will facilitate the playground orders causing a phase two on the range cunning town recreation at the contractor point of war. Mission was able to take advantage of an $8,960, uh, or $936 dollar and one cent discount for the remaining freestanding amenities. In addition to the game time grant savings, staff applied to the land and water conservation fund LWCF for a grant to fund phase two improvements at Mohawk Park for 500 thousand, 566,285 dollars. A LWCF coordinator was on site the last week of September 2023 to review the layout and improvement locations. The grant decision for phase two is pending. A grant of approximately 400,000 was secured from the LWCF for phase one improvements. Mayor, I move the city council approve a contract with County County Recreation for the Mohawk Park includes a playground equipment partial order for an amount not to exceed 583,020 dollars before it sets.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this item? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Kring.
Aye.
Chosey.
Aye.
Louden.
Yes.
Ryard.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yes.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, seven D, Solar Pigment Table, Waterworks Park. The 2024 Waterworks Park Improvement Project is officially underway. The solar picnic table was parked out on the general contractor's scope of work with the hope of eliminating any middleman work and finding the best product for the best price. Staff studied advances in manufacturing and sustainable inputs and considered the following factors to determine the appropriate solution with the best long-term value for Mission Parks system. Tables and panels meet outdoor temperature, weather and use of its use extremities, standard design style that can be easily made ADA accessible. Power coated steel and free wireless, sustainable productivity, 25-year warranty, five-year warranty on the front wiring and rated to 1,000 amps. Staff solicited bids from the two companies that have regional installations at universities, libraries, business, business campuses. Sunhold and Loomis both get a bid with Sunhold determined to be the lowest and most responsive bidder. There may be shipping increases on the horizon due to seasonal demand, so staff recommends increasing the amount budgeted amount for shipping by $300 if it is needed. Mayor, I move the city council approve the purchase of one solar picnic table as part of Waterworks Park improvements in an amount not to exceed 20,015 dollars.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Thomas.
Yes.
Chosey.
Aye.
Louden.
Yes.
Boltinghouse. Ryard.
Aye.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Kring.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Right, seven E, Johnson Drive Two Design Contract Metcalf to Lamar. The Johnson Drive Phase Two project Metcalf to Lamar is included in the city capital, the city's capital improvement program, CID and five-year course program for construction in 2026 at an estimated cost of $12,609,901. The scope of work includes full depth pavement reconstruction, sidewalk and retaining wall, stormwater improvements, a traffic signal layout and replacement of streetlights, insulation of a hot industrious signal that breaks and various street cave improvements. The stormwater and sidewalk improvements will require the city to acquire easements or additional, additional right of way. Survey work to determine the necessary easements and right of way was authorized by a separate task order in 2023. Once the survey work is completed, the acquisition of the additional right of way and easements will be handled by an outside Grazer consultant in, in 2025 due to the federal requirements and guidelines associated with this project. In May 2023, the Mission Johnson Drive Rehabilitation Program Project was programmed through Mark STP for 2026 construction with funds at 8020 for construction and construction inspections up to a maximum of $6 million. Due to the timeline provided through the Kansas Department of Transportation, the city is required to have a design contract executed no later, uh, no later than April 1st, 2024 to keep this project on track to address for bids in December 2025. The task order with Wilson includes design services for the roadway and stormwater infrastructure. The design services also include utility coordination, project management, public engagement and bid and construction based services. The construction cost of the project will exceed whether the city can cash flow in any given year and staff will be bringing financing options forward at a later date for council consideration, including proposals to secure additional outsides. I did, sorry. I did the top of the page. Mayor, I move the city council approve a task order with Olson for engineering services for design work associated with Johnson Drive, uh, Phase Two Metcalf to Lamar project in an amount not to exceed uh, 862,210 dollars. Or I'm sorry, let me read that again. 862,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Yeah, Debbie.
Grant, thank you for getting rings on there. The constituents in my area are really going to appreciate that. It's been a long time going got a lot of traffic going through there, real heavily used and we appreciate getting any kind of civilization or anything relative to safety for the people that live there and that daycare is right next to it. So thanks so much.
All right, any public comment on the side? Seeing nothing further, Robin, please call the roll.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Kring.
Aye.
Louden.
Yes.
Chosey.
Aye.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yes.
Ryard.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Seven F, Bike Share Program Obligation of Branch Funds. The City of Mission, in collaboration with Roland Park, has committed a joint application with the Bike Share Program extension in Northeast Johnson County. The carbon reduction program focuses on mitigating carbon dioxide emissions and on road transportation resources. In mid 2023, the City of Mission and Roland Park jointly applied for the Bike Share Program extension to include 30 e-bikes admission and 20 e-bikes in Roland Park. Which then, which aims to enhance mobility options, especially in Northeast Johnson County and integrate electric bikes or e-bikes into the community. The allocation covers the cost of e-bikes, batteries, fiber racks, weight finding signage, promotional material and operational expenses for a period of five years. The City of Mission is committed to leading by example in using park emissions by incorporating e-bike into our transportation infrastructure. We are taking proactive steps for a sustainable environmentally friendly future. This is a joint application with Roland Park and Mission is lead agency and project sponsor. The total project cost, including equipment, signage for promotional materials and operations is 628,810 dollars. The local match required is 125,760 dollars. The operation cost will be paid quarterly over five years. The City of Mission will enter into an interlocal agreement with Roland Park for the project reimbursements and an agreement with Ryan Casey for the maintenance and operations of the e-bike. Mayor, I move the city council approval resolution obligating 125,760 dollars in local match for the Northeast Johnson County Ryan Casey Bike Share Project. Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Any public comments on the side? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Carpenter Davis.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Chosey.
Aye.
Boltinghouse.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kring.
Aye.
Louden.
Yes.
Ryard.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That concludes my report. All right, we do not have any unfinished business tonight, therefore we will move on to new business. We do have one item of new business this evening, which is a resolution ratifying expenditure of funds for purchase of Ford F-550 truck for the Public Works Department. Laura Stevens, for Reddick, will report about this item.
Yes. Longing for the day when supply chain issues are no longer a thing and we are under the gun to make very rapid decisions, uh, about vehicles and equipment purchases. Uh, I think we're familiar, the last several years, we get, um, unanticipated windows provided to us by, uh, dealers, uh, and you have to make the decision in pretty short order about whether or not we're going to commit uh, to those vehicles, uh, and equipments. Uh, in this case, we had the purchase of Ford F-550 truck funded in 2024 by the public orders department. Um, the window, uh, order window that was provided to us uh, by Shawnee Ford didn't align nicely with the council dates, uh, so I authorized that expenditure since it was included in the, in the budget and so it is on order. Uh, and this, uh, resolution in front of you this evening would just ratify, uh, that expenditure. We have any, any questions as well? I know Mr. Ward, he's here this evening. Any questions? Seeing none.
Mayor.
I entertain motion.
Mayor, I move the city council through the resolution ratifying expenditure with Shawnee Mission Ford for purchase of a Ford F-550 truck in the amount of 67,805 dollars.
Second.
For the Public Works Department.
So.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please.
Seeing none, Robyn, please call the roll. Crane?
Hi.
Loudon?
Yes.
Ryer?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Thomas?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Josie?
Aye.
Boltinghouse?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we will now move to comments from the city council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members, does anyone on the council have something they'd like to share tonight? Yes, Trent?
Thank you, Mayor. I know sometimes we're all weeds on committee meetings and detailing these items and, and dialogue, uh, but I just didn't want to be lost on either us or the public, just how monumental all of these items we passed tonight were, all in one meeting almost, I just think, uh, I've been here for five years and I can't recall, if I'm blanking, but I'm leading this product before, just with all the right investments, you know, we're talking about the e-bikes, the Johnson Drive rehabilitation study, the park playground equipment, um, the Mill House, uh, work that's been done, big green space redevelopment post-Johnson Drive is just really, uh, commendable and makes me really proud because of this body of it all, so I just wanted to highlight that. I think it's really exciting.
Yeah, Debbie? Uh, the mayor may come comment on this further, but, uh, three of us will be attending the National League of Cities meeting. It's the Congress for Cities Act in Washington, D.C., March tenth through the thirteenth, and we will have an opportunity to meet with our colleagues across the board and discuss some real important things. I know I sit on energy, environment, and natural resources, and I am so proud I have a presentation put together based on what this sustainability commission has accomplished and all the wonderful things they bring to immunity, and I think it's great to share that with other people in councils across the country, so I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah, in connection with that, Mission got selected next week. The National League of Cities Leadership, uh, group is making the rounds for an NLC anniversary, and some of them will be coming to visit us next week, so that's exciting too.
Yes, Lori?
Thanks. Um, so I wanted, I want to share, uh, just a little news publicly, um, and to be quite honest, it tonight feels a little reminiscent of, of Emily Randall's announcement that she was leaving or her last meeting, just like a quintessential, like, kind of perfect civic meeting. Um, and tonight felt very similar to that to me, maybe I'm just feeling a little, a little sad. Um, but it's a mixed emotion that I, I just want to share that, um, my family and I will soon be putting our house, um, on the carpet, and, um, getting more emotional, I thought I went, um, apologies. We still have time. I anticipate my last meeting will be in April, um, and I just want to give the city as much need time to find a fabulous word one replacement. Uh, I see Tom Garrity in the back there, maybe ready to. That's our, 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 our signature. Uh, and, um, yeah, I'm, I'm excited about the new floor, and, um, we are hoping to stay in Mission, just need, um, much bigger house, and I'm not sure we're going to find a good word one. So anyways, no comments from anybody tonight or anything like that, we don't have time for that, and, uh, but just want to announce that so the city can start advertising and, and make, you know, make all that happen.
Anything else, yeah, Debbie?
Is everybody done, Dave, just to, I'm going to go along with you. You know, for correction, for, for this motion, uh, it's set in date, the resolution doesn't hang with parks parcels. The written resolution is correct, the verbal motion said Article two, which is not Article three.
Is that my bad?
No, I would agree.
It's out there, but I.
So I've read it.
Yes.
Any further correction on that?
Or? The reservation itself is that you will sign is, is correct, but I just, to set the record straight, I appreciate that clarification.
I thought maybe I had too many in here.
The name we checked was, was not my house.
Yeah, I do, and unfortunately, I, I grimaced when I was putting this together because those two parcels hadn't been assigned a street address. And I was like, oh, not only do we have to write it, but somebody's going to have to read it.
All right, seeing no further council comments, we will move on to our council committee liaison reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay updated with the various activities that our board, commission, and committees for council members, both without allowing for sustainability question.
I attended the sustainability commission meeting, it was January first one, and mostly we just talked about protected and.
All right, next we have council members Crane and Schmidt for the Parks Recreation Treaty Commission.
I'm going to attend, uh, that meeting on the, well, I don't know what it was. Um, it's my first, uh, it's been a very long time, I think it's now that meeting five, six, seven years ago, so it was exciting to back. Um, a few items of note, uh, discuss some Johnson Drive updates, uh, including some regulations going to be updated to the plant, which is very exciting. Um, the commission noted, um, just local budget regarding some of the impro, uh, positive improvements to Waterworks and the big turnout that had come with the, uh, groundbreaking ceremony that was there. Um, just generally excited about the e-bike charging, uh, more use of the road more trail, um, so just hearing from the public, a lot more exciting about the park upgrades. Um, did discuss, uh, the needs for more apartment access to go out more far. Uh, you discussed the need for water for the new center to, um, just familiarize the group with, um, some of these. Uh, and then finally, uh, bulk of the time was spent, um, going through budget, um, which is what the next one is, maybe purposes for all, um, deeper dive in the budget and the.
Great. Next, we'll have an update from council members Ryer and Josie on Mission Magazine editorial.
First meeting, I'll have the pleasure of depending, has been postponed until, we've run today, twenty eighth.
All right.
Have any new recordings?
And finally, we have council member Carpenter Davis with Family Adoption.
Great, thanks. Um, our recap meeting was held in January twenty-third. Um, the Mission Family Adoption Program has been supported by the city of Mission, um, employees and volunteers since two thousand and six, and I don't think people recognize that sometimes. It's been a long time, eighteen years. Family adoption, um, volunteer committee works with social merchants at the Redenstein Elementary School, Hocker Grove Middle School, North High School, and Horizons to identify families in need as best support. The program began providing baskets, and this is just historical, baskets of food, and it started with just two families, John's kind of ninety-seven, and now we've served as many as about a hundred and two families, a little bit over that, um, to provide a box of food in thanks to added Christmas, and then also, um, gifts as identified by the family. So in my role as liaison, you know, I, I work with the city administrators and, and think about all the work that's put into this by our Public Works Department, our Parks and Rec group, and, and Cal Center, all the folks and the police. And so we'll be looking at this to provide a more historical perspective. I feel like I have an eighteen-year-old, and I kind of need to see where he's going to college, or she's going to college. So we're going to kind of put some data together to better reflect this, this program. Uh, this Friday, we're going to be holding, uh, an appreciation lunch for the city employees that assisted in this wonderful meeting, so thank you very much.
Great. And then this evening, we do have several new appointments to consider for our various boards and commissions. So first, I would put before you the appointment of Kelsey Brown, Ward two, for the planning commission with a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move the city council to uphold the appointment of Kelsey Brown, Ward two, to the planning commission with a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Robyn, please call the roll. Boltinghouse?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Loudon?
Yes.
Crane?
Hi.
Carpenter Davis?
Hi.
Josie?
Aye.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, next, I put before you the appointment of Dylan C. is Ward three for the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission with a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move the city to uphold the appointment of Dylan C. is Ward three to the Parks Recreation and Tree Commission for the term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine.
Second. We have a motion in a second, any discussion? I did want to point out Dylan's hiding in the back corner. Dylan, if you just want to wave and, wave and say hi, glad to have you here tonight. Uh, Robyn, please call the roll. Loudon?
Hi.
Josie?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
House?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Hi.
Thomas?
Yeah.
Crane?
Here.
Motion carries. Thanks, still here. All right, next, I put before you the appointment of Mike Patterson, Ward four, to the Board of zoning appeals, the term expiring February twenty-first, twenty twenty-seven, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move the city council to uphold the appointment of Mike Patterson, Ward four, onto the Board of zoning appeals with the term expiring February twenty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Second. Motion in a second, any discussion? Robyn, please call the roll. Crane?
Hi.
Josie?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Boltinghouse?
Aye.
Thomas?
Yes.
Loudon?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Okay, next we have our city administrators' report, and if you have any items you would like to share with the council tonight.
Um, I think Robyn has a couple of business updates. Uh, it's been a little bit of a whirlwind of the day, so.
I do.
Your, I'll just, I'll let you give this. I was planning to give the status, the twenty twenty-three year-end project status update. We have not yet proved to the entire document, so we, hopefully we'll get sent that out to you here Friday or, uh, over the weekend, and then we'll have an opportunity to answer your questions, but, um, productive year, uh, even with some of the staffing that we've had. Um, that's been great, we are Brian's fully, not only fully staffed in community development, we are fully staffed in admin. Justin, um, the, arrived on Monday, and he's come back every day since then, so that's a great vibe. So excited to, um, really just kind of be back, uh, you know, fully staffed and, uh, looking forward to those opportunities.
All right. Robyn? Thank you, I do have a few business updates, uh, for you this evening. Uh, the first one is that the big biscuit, the long-awaited big biscuit has opened at seventeen seventeen Johnson Drive, and they are hosting our urban planning and a grand opening ceremony on February twenty-seventh at eight-thirty, and we hope number will be, also be giving some remarks there, so if you're pleased, please look to join us. Um, and then also our friends at the Torrid Union are getting closer and closer to completion, and they are, um, targeting a March grand opening, urban planning ceremony there, so we'll share more of that information when we get a little bit closer. Um, Mission Lead Lifestyle is a healthcare clinic specialized in family practice, where it's health and weight loss at fifty-seven thirty-nine Johnson Drive, and they have planned to open in February. Liberty Tax has opened a pop-up location for the tax season in sixty-five eighteen Martway Street, and former Mission resident, Beryl Schlossmacher, has returned to Mission as a business owner, and she is opening Beryl's Boutique at fifty-eight thirty-two Johnson Drive. She hopes to be open at the end of February, beginning of March. That's all I have for you for business updates, and I would direct your attention to Johnson Drive during daytime for some well-laid banners for the spring, and we're really like the way that they turn up, and I hope that you do too. Thank you. Great. All right, we do have the need for an executive session this evening. The governing body will adjourn to the executive session for the allotted time. When that time is expired, the governing body will reach some means to do one of the following. One, extend the time required for discussion and return to executive session, or two, continue our city council meeting. As a reminder to the public, the governing body may take no binding action in the executive session. I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the city council recess to the executive session in accordance with the statute seventy-five dash four three one nine, section B one, for talks of change of law determining and preliminary discussions related to the acquisition of real property. Also, in the executive session, will be city administrator Laura Smith, uh, and city attorney David Warren. The open meeting will resume in the council chambers in thirty minutes at eight thirty-four p.m.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Robyn, please call the roll. Thomas?
Yeah.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Carpenter Davis?
Hi.
Josie?
Aye.
Ryer?
Aye.
Boltinghouse?
Aye.
Loudon?
Yeah.
Crane?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Before we adjourn tonight, I want to show publicly that the video meeting will be available through the link on our website, admissioncs.org. There being note for the business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
No.
All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
We would love you to.
Thank you.